Okay, I call to order the Lynchburg Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, August eighth, 2018. And the first order of business is minutes, which I think we'll do at the next meeting. So, the first thing we'll hear is a public hearing on the petition of Valvoline LLC for conditional use permit at thirty thirty-one and thirty thirty-three Old Forest Road to allow the operation of an automobile oil change facility in a B three community business district. So is there a presentation we can hear?
Sure. So, members of Planning Commission, this property contains two tracts, approximately point seven nine acres. It currently has two buildings. I believe one of them is a former Dairy Queen and the other one is a cleaners' building. The property's owned B three, community business district. Oil change facilities such as the ones that is proposed are allowed in these districts upon approval of a conditional use permit. The property is recommended for neighborhood commercial uses on the future land use map. These areas are intended to consist primarily of restaurant, office, retail uses, scaled and designed to be accessible and compatible with surrounding neighborhoods. While the proposed use is not entirely compatible with the proposed neighborhood commercial use recommended for this area, its small footprint, substantial landscaping, and the fact that it's closing three curb cuts onto Old Forest Road should greatly improve conditions in this area and help it blend in very well. The Planning Division does recommend approval of the conditional use permit.
Great, thank you. And who is here to represent the project? Could you please come up, sign your name? And we will have ten minutes.
I'm here to represent this petition. We're asking for approval for, of the CEP to build a two bay, what we call a two bay right hand, where the tower is shown on the right hand, the main entry of the building. About a sixteen hundred square foot building, on the lots as presented. We really want to do business in this area. Strategically, it makes sense for us to be here. We want to be here, want to do business with your community. Any questions that you may have, I'm here to answer. Other than that, that's all I have.
That's great. We might be calling you back up if we have any questions from the, from the community. Is there anybody who would like to speak in favor of the petition? How about in opposition to the petition? Okay, well, I think with that, the public hearing, public part of the hearing is closed, and now we will deliberate. So what do you all, what do you think?
Being that I live about a mile and a half away from this, my only concern is the traffic at the intersection for left-hand turns going into it. It's probably not going to be any greater than the people trying to pull, do a left-hand turn, trying to pull into McDonald's across the street. I'm just concerned that, you know, it does hamper the peak traffic hours, people trying to make left-hand turns, one way or the other.
As I understand it, you're closing three entrances, right?
Yeah.
Three curb cuts and just having one, and there used to be two businesses there, and now there will just be one. I would imagine they were, they're going to have fewer customers, you know, per hour, whatever, than the two combined did, so.
Well, just like I say, I mean, that, that left-hand turn is a killer. It worsens me trying to make a left-hand turn on the length there, because people trying to pull into McDonald's are blocking the traffic just at CBS, so I can just swing around and catch that light without having to worry about anything. But I'm just, you know, there's always that possibility where the people trying to go the opposite way, trying to make a left into it, will be stymied by traffic during light changes, and could cause a traffic jam, but they're at the stoplight, and impact their business, because people say it's too difficult to get to.
And I agree with you. I think, I think that area bottles up, I mean, bottlenecks up a lot, but I think, too, having less access in there, both from the standpoint of actual access, and the fact it's one business, not two, I think, you know, that's, yeah, I'm with you. I don't know that I'm just concerned about that. The incremental amount's not going to be that big, not going to be that great, is what I guess I'm trying to say. So, yeah, I'd be in favor of it.
Yeah, I work at John Stewart Walker, which is just a few blocks away, and I, you know, travel this road many times a day, at many different hours, and don't see any, any concern, or don't see any change. I do agree with you, you know, that the traffic can stop and all that stuff, but I don't think that the change of ownership is going to affect that. But I did have a question just about the Valvoline. Wondered, I mean, just Jiffy Lube is just a couple of blocks away, and I'm, and I'm sure you guys have, have done your research, but, I mean, you honestly think there's enough oil changes that need to be had to, to, I guess, to?
We do. We-
Yeah, we do. We'd like to come up and answer that question. I may have a couple others.
We do. We run our numbers. We try to create brand loyalty, so I would like to think that we have our customers, they have theirs. It's, it's a free country, and we don't want to intrude or any of that. That's not our, that's not our MO. We just want to go in, we want to be a contributor to the community and, and do a, do a good job. That's really all we want, but I don't see us as a direct competitor.
And after all, we do have two auto parts stores.
I know.
Yeah, side by side.
Turning into quite the little automobile area, automobile area.
I think my only issue would be, you know, is with the traffic, that, that, that area. I've actually seen an accident there with somebody coming into Dairy Queen, turning left into Dairy Queen, and somebody stopping, letting go of someone in the slow lane on the other side, hitting them. But I don't, I don't foresee, actually, probably, to me, I feel like it might be less traffic spread over more time than it was when it was a Dairy Queen that was active, that was really busy in the afternoons, on the weekends, so I think it's a good business addition myself.
Yeah, I have no, no opposition.
I also like the landscaping, because the neighbors are not taking up the entire two blocks, unlike the landscape they're putting up there.
What does-
I'll make a motion that we recommend to council to approve the petition.
Okay.
Second?
Okay.
Do you guys have all, say aye?
Oh, that's right, yeah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, eyes carry. Somebody like to read it out? I think somebody else reads it out. This is my first time here, so.
It is already done.
Oh, it's already?
Yeah.
Okay, you'll have to say that. Okay, great. That's good. I realize my cheat sheet, I have one page.
This man has a question over here.
Okay. Who's this? A question? Okay.
Yes, I do. Not so much about Valvoline, but I'm new to the area. I'm from the Midwest, Minnesota. I, I'm actually the CEO of a company in Virginia, but the gentleman is absolutely correct. The turn lanes are nonexistent on Old Forest Road. Everybody knows. The only turn lanes that you have is up by Wells Fargo, where you turn into the Walmart. That is all you have. And if you know this, Old Forest Road is starting to develop nicely, so I see, I see future struggles here with congestion, okay? He's absolutely right. It's free country, you can go wherever you want. It's going to come down to customer service, right? That's just business one-on-one. So, my question is, is where do you go? Where do you go with Old Forest? What do you do?
Simon, we actually looked at Old Forest Road a few years back, and really, the answer at that time was to look at ways to improving access management, less curb cuts, so you reduce the number of conflict points and try and control it that way. Right-of-way is obviously constrained. If we had to go wide and to add turn lanes, you're obviously getting into private property. So, I think that the question, the answer at this time, and at that time also, was to try and improve access management along that corridor.
And again, I, I see so many great things going on in Lynchburg right now, that, you know, let's keep it going. I think everybody needs opportunities. We need to put people to work. So, I just wanted to sit in and just see how things are going, and congratulate Valvoline for coming to the neighborhood, and it's all about customer service, so it's just, it's just, it's just a sign on the building, right? It's the people that make the difference. So, with that, I'm going to leave. Thank you.
Thank you. So is there, you know, we, thank you for your, for bringing this to us, and wish you the best of luck on getting that up and going? And with that, I don't think we have any other business?
The only thing I think, and Paige is good at saying this, is make a recommendation to city council. So obviously, you know, you do it all again for them, so just to give you a heads-up on what the next steps are. Paige says it better, but that's the gist.
Yeah, he does.
Thanks for your support.
So is this a public hearing on this?
No.
Okay, that's what I thought. Yeah, I didn't think we had any more business for the, for the public. So do we close? How does that work?
Basically, you just move into a work session.
Okay.
And we'll go from there.
All right, so that's, we're moving into a work session, and that's open to the public, correct?
It is open to the public, but it's not open to public comment unless you specifically want to do so.
Not a lot of public to-
Certainly, you two can't get involved.
That's Mr. Hill, I think.
Yeah.
Great, okay.
So, we also, in addition to Mr. White and Ms. Nygaard, we have with us David Hill, who is the, I guess the principal, founder of Hill Studio out of Roanoke. Hill Studio and their team helped us prepare this master plan. And this has really been a, just a tremendous group effort, team approach, not only city employees, but people in the community. But we would not be at this point today if, if it was not for Rachel Forsaisian and, and Nygaard. They really helped bring this all together. And also Downtown Lynchburg Association helped us tremendously in marketing this plan. Just the way this plan has been branded and put out to the public is, is astonishing. So, we think it's a great plan. We're going to give you a short presentation today, and Mr. Hill is here, and we'll try and answer what questions you have. This is really your time to roll up your sleeves, and let's talk about it. So, when we talk about Downtown Lynchburg, I'd like for you to reimagine it. I'd like for you to think about what it has accomplished and what can be accomplished through planning, through having a vision, and not just accepting the status quo. And if you've heard this presentation before, I apologize, but we're also trying to shorten it for tomorrow. But think of Downtown Lynchburg as really being in a renaissance. It's a rebirth, and it's a revival. Lynchburg's continuing to be revitalized and giving new life, and I really attribute it and relate it to, like a phoenix, right? And a phoenix is this mystical bird that rises from the ashes of its predecessor. But briefly, before we can talk about revitalization and where we are today, we have to understand a little bit about the history of the development of downtown and the city as a whole. So we all know that Lynch's Ferry was founded in seventeen fifty-seven at the base of Ninth Street, and at that time, it was primarily a tobacco economy. It eventually evolved during the Civil War. Lynchburg was primarily a supply center and a hospital center, and was spared most of the destruction other Virginia cities and larger towns saw. Lynchburg continued to grow. In seventeen eighty-six, it was incorporated as a town. As the city grew and annexed areas, the economy really switched over to more of a manufacturing economy. Cotton mills, just shoe, shoe manufacturing, and now we're up to technology, obviously. But it's important to understand how retail migrated away from downtown Lynchburg. Here, we see downtown in seventeen fifty-seven. Pittman Plaza was the first major retail push away from downtown, and there was an editorial, editorial editor of the newspaper that was quoted as saying, "Pittman Plaza did to downtown Lynchburg, which General Sherman never could. It destroyed it." And that is actually so true. But as the land area of Lynchburg grew, we, retail chased it, chased it across the boundaries. We got more open land, we created more retail. River Ridge Mob was opened in nineteen eighty, Woods Crossing in two thousand, Woods Crossing West in two thousand and six, and we all know we have very limited land area now. But along with that, not only did our retail migrate, we started making conscious decisions with our transportation system to, instead of coming into the center of our downtown, we started pushing our transportation to the edges of downtown to get people around it quickly. It's as we had forgot about it, right? Seventh, Ninth Street was really the original bridge that came into downtown, Center City. Then we pushed to Seventh Street. Carter Glass Bridge was built in the fifties, and John Lynch, and I believe it was eighty-eight. So, instead of focusing on downtown Lynchburg, we started focusing on the suburban sprawl, really, the retail away from downtown, and getting people away from it. And if you look at the bridges that are there now, you know, you've got four-lane bridges on both sides of downtown. We're not focused on bringing people into downtown, it was focused on sending people around it. And these are just some very brief images that, of what these bridges did to our community. Nineteen forty-one, and then when you see the John Lynch Bridge being constructed, you see buildings being demolished, but also you start seeing changes in things like buildings being removed for parking areas. Because what was happening is the retailers that were left were trying to compete with suburban's type, type shopping malls. And they were tearing the buildings down to try and get big, vast expanses of parking areas, they were putting on big metal facades, all the things that are not what's unique about our downtown, and we'll talk about that in a little bit more. Carter Glass Bridge, you see, is actually, when it was built, it divided entire neighborhoods and took out entire blocks. But this block here is between Seventh and Eighth Street on Commerce, is really the main reason we're sitting here today. In nineteen ninety-eight, there was a proposal to demolish these six buildings, and the, the director of community development at the time was Rachel Flynn. And she started forming relationships with community leaders, with historic preservation leaders, and really saved these buildings. And the saving of these buildings led to the creation of the two thousand Sasaki Plan. And Albert Einstein said, "We cannot solve our problems with the same thinking we used when we created them." And that is so true. We realized that we were not going to revitalize our downtown by demolishing buildings and constructing huge parking lots. Now, that, when that plan was created, Mayor Joe Riley was brought in from the city of Charleston and gave an overview of the work that they were doing there, and it, that was really a pivotal moment, because Mayor Riley was asked, "Well, what about the funding? How are you going to do this?" And Mayor Riley said, "It's not about the funding, it's about the vision." And that's very important. It's not about the funding, it's about the vision, because without a vision, you cannot achieve success. So, now, those buildings are close edge loss. They were designed, renovated in two thousand twelve with fifty-two units. You've got the Buzzard's Roost renovated in two thousand and four, and Tresca on Eighth. And this image really captures the essence of downtown revitalization, because what this image shows is friends gathering, celebrating on downtown streets, the creation of family, just the, the birth of a new life. And without the Sasaki Plan in two thousand, and without that change in thinking, and without stopping to accept the status quo of what was the way downtown development was occurring, this picture would not be here, and it would have faded away, it would not exist, and we would not be where we are today. So, what is a downtown plan? A downtown plan is a twenty-year blueprint for the downtown, but it's also a clear path forward for achieving a vision. A clear path forward for achieving a vision of Lynchburg. And the twenty forty vision is a bustling, thriving urban core, economic, social, and cultural hub, livable neighborhoods, diverse, unique, historic, vibrant public spaces, an exciting atmosphere, and more importantly, downtown Lynchburg is the heart of this region. Whether it be Amherst County, Bedford County, Campbell, it is the heart of the region. It is the urban core of this region, and it is the heart. This is a downtown twenty forty master plan. This is really just a collection of all of the things that are in the two hundred and sixty-some-odd-page document, in an illustrative version. We'll talk about some of these in more detail. So when we look at downtown today, you know, it's doing pretty good. It's been very successful since two thousand. The neighborhoods around downtown have been successful. We've got sculptures, we've got gathering places. It's a very neat place to be, but we think that downtown can be so much more. And what people told us during the planning process is, "It's becoming the city where I want to live." And it's taking the city up to that next level, and it's becoming epic. So with the downtown twenty forty master plan, we think that we can achieve those things. We looked at the economy. Overall, the economy is doing very well, and downtown and the city as a whole can look to achieve more of its fair share of the market. So let's just look at the basics. We, the very core of downtown, the study area boundaries are Fifth Street, John Lynch Bridge here, Carter Glass bounded by the river and up to Court Street. But very importantly, we also looked at some areas adjacent to downtown, this area out here, and also the surrounding neighborhoods, and even looked out how we can make connections to the colleges and universities. Mentioned it earlier, but there was a tremendous amount of public input that went into this plan. Hopefully, many of you participated in some, or all of it. We had a kickoff event that was, we had a speaker, Melody Wardnick, that talked to us about loving the place that you live, with over three hundred attendees. There was an online survey with over nine hundred survey responses, webpage created, listening sessions, pop-up events. We went out to colleges, we went out to Walmart, we went out all around the city, and we did a series of design workshops. And we did that in gathering information to prepare the plan, and now we're doing it presenting the plan. You know, we've been two or three different places already, and we've got a whole list of other places where we're going to do these presentations. So let's talk about, a little bit about some of the key parts of the plan. The buildings, the number one thing that, that we heard, or maybe not the number one, but definitely in the top, when people told us what they liked about downtown was the quaint, the interesting, historic architecture of downtown Lynchburg. It's why they enjoyed coming here. It's the culture, it's the experience. But if you actually look at what's protecting that, there's nothing in place. This is a map of the National Register and State Districts in this light blue. Now, we have some local, locally designated historic districts, Courthouse Hill, Diamond Hill, those neighborhoods, but when you get to downtown, there is nothing protecting the historic resources beyond a five-year period. Let me repeat that. Nothing protecting the historic resources beyond a five-year period. If you want to tear a building down, and you haven't used historic tax credits from the state and feds, you can tear that building down just like that.
Question?
Mm-hmm.
What do you mean, beyond a five-year period?
After five years, the limitations on what you can do with that building are gone away. That's why we have a building downtown, and we won't mention which one it is, that used tax credits to rehabilitate it, and then five years later, they ripped the slate shingles off of it and put asphalt on it. So there's nothing protecting the buildings beyond five years.
And the five years is if you use tax-
Correct. If you haven't used state tax credits-
You can do anything.
You can do anything you want. Design guidelines that are specific to downtown should be created that would protect the buildings that are here, but also design guidelines that would encourage and promote appropriate infill, buildings that are going to blend with the buildings that are here. Guys, this is not really rocket science. This is stuff that we've known for twenty-five years, and this plan is just reemphasizing things that we know should have already been done, but the plan is recommending and proposing that we go ahead and actually do it.
So just to be clear, because I, I think I just finally heard something, which you probably told me three times. So, you're telling me that on a national register basis, we'd actually, you'd actually have some teeth in your enforcement-
On a, on a local basis, you would have teeth.
We already-
Well, because what I'm sitting here saying is, is this is, I mean, the buildings that you've shown there are in a, are in a local historic district-
No.
Based on your other map.
No, absolutely not.
Okay, then I'm-
They are in a state and national district.
Okay.
So unless you're using tax credits, there's no-
Okay. I had it backwards. Thank you.
So there's more teeth locally than there is nationally?
Absolutely.
I was, thought it was the exact opposite of that.
No. We looked at the adaptive reuse of several buildings. Eleven, twelve Main Street is the city auditorium, and nine oh one Main Street. Since this plan has been created, actually, there are people looking at both of those buildings, and actually, nine oh one Main Street is being renovated into a venue place, which is really not that far from what the plan recommended for. The, the point of the plan was to, there was four or five different buildings that were highlighted. The point of highlighting those buildings in the plan was to bring attention to them and to say, "Hey, these are some buildings that are being underutilized. Here are some thoughts on how they could be used." And it's occurring. So, we looked at parks and gathering places. One of the other things that we heard a great deal was that people liked the festivals and the concert series downtown. But those festivals and concerts are occurring in the Riverfront Park, and that park was not designed for large events on a frequent basis, okay? So what was happening is the grounds were getting torn up, and it was difficult to maintain. So what the plan recommends is a downtown amphitheater seating around forty-five hundred people, and this is at the base of the lower bluff walk, right near where the Water Bear statue is. It would be flanked by two new buildings. We've been in contact with the property owner. This is a concept of how we could deal with those large events, and really bring another, really another gathering and venue special place to downtown. Riverfront Park, this was the Nelson Bird Wolf Plan done in two thousand and six, I believe, and the, the new plan builds upon that with the showing an, an alternate amphitheater site in, in the park area. Also shows a bridge over to the Rivers Edge Trail, shows a playground, public restrooms, and realigning the bike trail for, for better connectivity. Also highlights an area called Canal Park. This is down in front of where Amazement Square built their new building. This is a very historic location. This is where the aqueduct was that brought the toes over to the canal system. And this really just highlights this area and talks about the history. One of the important things of this, instead of the bike trail as it is now, which is kind of very circuitous, coming along the upper portion of-
Jefferson.
Jefferson, it would actually, it would be tight, but you can get it through this area, and then actually, it would come under the, the Ninth Street Bridge here. This is an area that we're really excited about, the Foundry Park. This was the old Intermet site further down Concord Turnpike. This is a key location because this is an area where we are not separated from the river by the railroad. So with a realignment of Concord, Concord Turnpike to the back, which would still allow for the truck traffic, this would allow a connection and a- in a park area straight to, down to the banks of the river. This could have smaller venues, but it would be more of your active recreational spaces, things like zip lines, boat ramps, those types of things. Clay Street Reservoir was highlighted. It was highlighted in the Fifth Street Plan, but people told us that anything with a, an extended history should be preserved. And this plan, which is not too far away from what the Fifth Street Plan shows, is that this park could be a very unique green space for the upper part of downtown lawn area, reflecting pool could quite possibly be converted into an ice rink during the winter. Dog Park, a lot of the residents downtown, there's over 900 units downtown, many, many more people living down here. They have four-legged friends. Dog Park at the, that triangular location at 12th and Gray Street, it could, it could be converted into a special green area for our furry loved ones. City Hall Plaza, this is right across Church Street from City Hall, converted into another gathering place because what people told us is, you know, they love coming downtown, but there's not a ton of public gathering spaces and they felt like they had to constantly be moving and going somewhere because there weren't places to sit and to gather. And the college students told us, you know, we'd like to have more smaller gathering places for us just to come and sit, hang out, drink a cup of coffee or whatever it is they're drinking. Well, they can't do that in public. But also very unique little space, but could still have some parking off of the street. Community Market Arrival Pad, there's already a plan to redo the market and bring the farmers' vendor areas out closer to the street. But this Arrival Pad is another area here at the base of 12th Street, which is a high pedestrian area, really to create another special place and a gathering spot for people. Focus on the pedestrian, slow traffic down.
Does that take out all the parking from there?
Um-
Who's parking in the back near the community market building?
Back here?
Yes, the white space right there.
Oh, okay. Yep. Trails and pedestrian connections. We also looked, we looked a lot at how to move people up and down the steep terrain of downtown. You know, it's very easily going, you know, across Main Street or Church Street. But we've also got some dramatic views in Lynchburg. This is Monument Terrace looking down Ninth Street. This is a, we've designated two other hill climbs that we're calling them. But you know, if you're walking up Ninth Street, it's not as bad as if you're walking up some of the other streets because you've got, you've got the scenery, you've got the views, you've got the street skate. You've got something to take your mind off of some of that pain of walking, right?
It's not as long as 12th Street.
Right. So this, obviously, we know about the bluff walk. This is another mid-block connection. The plan, as the 2000 plan recommended, extends that bluff walk across Washington Street. But these, the plan also recommends, as the 2000 plan did, this upper bluff walk that would really connect Sixth Street over to 12th and has a series of hill climbs. So Sixth Street would be more of kind of like a water feature or focusing on, you know, stormwater, that type of thing, as it comes down the hill from the canal to the James River. And 12th Street hill climb could be more dedicated towards public art, something to bring interest to those corridors.
As we talk about these two things, I don't know if this is a good time to jump in on this or not, but is there any opportunity to look at different traffic patterns? I'm not talking about permanent. I'm talking about temporary. So for, for the easiest thing might be, as we talk about more walking, maybe around the community market until, you know, 12, it's walk, you know, it's, it's just traffic comes up past Cracker Tarian and then cuts back down. Everything between's walking.
Yeah. We're going to get to traffic patterns because this plan is premised on park once and walk.
I understand that on a permanent basis, but is this venue appropriate to sit down and say occasional sort of, sort of traffic pattern? So you might, so for the community market, you might make that walking only between certain hours on Saturdays?
Absolutely. I think every, I think that's a good point. It could very well be-
I just wasn't sure how that, where that made sense. We'll have to talk about it now.
No, this is a great place. I mean, we'd love to work something like that into the plan, if the plan commission recommends it. Also, continuing on with the creation of green space and using streets as public spaces, there is this idea of parklets. You take one or two parking spaces and you either convert it into seating area for restaurants or it could just be green space. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Rachel and she's going to talk about some of the other major components in the plan.
All right. All right, moving on to parking. 25% of land area downtown is dedicated to surface parking lots. That's not even the decks. That's 40 acres, and that's not an efficient use of land. Lots of space downtown being dedicated to cars and cars just sitting still. This plan really wants to get people out of their cars. They're the ones that spend money. They're the ones that make downtown a vibrant place to be. The more people on the street, the more people want to be there. Again, park once. These are the founding principles that we built this plan on. So looking at our current parking model, the most convenient prime spaces, which are our on-street spaces located near businesses, are free while off-street lots cost money. But is that the most logical solution? Because if your on-street spaces are the most convenient and most premium, they should be the ones that cost money. Meanwhile, off-street spaces should have a smaller fee. So we're proposing in the plan to flip the model of what we have now, charge for on-street, off-street, offset that with one to two hours free in off-street lots and decks. And the idea is to really get people to, the turnover would get people to park where they should, meaning long-term parkers should be in the off-street lots, either, you know, residents of downtown or people who are coming there for the day or the afternoon, while short-term spaces are on-street and they are quickly turning over so that people who want to make quick stops and go on to their final destination, home or whatever it is, are able to do that. The plan considers new decks when existing decks we have are approaching capacity or when they reach their end of expected life and need replacement. We're not there yet, but when we are, the plan proposes to rebuild decks or new decks with ground floor retail use, which would look something like this. This is the midtown deck looking up from Commerce Street. People want to walk past shops, restaurants, et cetera. When walking past large swaths of parking lot or parking deck, there's no interest. People don't want to keep going. They're more likely to just turn around the way they came and go back to their car or their original place they came from. An example of this is the My Dog Duke's Diner, which is, we want to see more of that, basically. Moving on to transportation and mobility, like I said, a guiding principle of the plan and going back to that vision statement is walkability. Wide sidewalks, benches, shade trees, these are all principles of walkability, but also how safe is it to walk? How easy is it to get around, to cross the street? How fast is traffic moving? Two-way traffic is proposed in the downtown 2040 plan, and the main reasons are for that walkability for the pedestrian. It brings activity to the street, money spent. That's, that's the benefit of the pedestrian. The car does not do that. It also is more navigable for his residents and visitors, reduces traffic. It reduces the need to circle the block. If you miss your destination, you have to go a couple blocks out of the way if streets are one-way. It also allows for easier detours, which we know are a part of life downtown for at least the foreseeable future due to the downtown waterline and street skate project or Main Street renewal, as we're calling the next phase, and retail benefits of two-way traffic. Two-way traffic gives equal opportunity for every business on the street to be seen. Here's a couple graphics showing what we mean when we say it's safer for pedestrians. This is the double-threat pedestrian conflict. This pedestrian is crossing. The one car has stopped, but the car in the farther lane can't see him, poses a problem for that person crossing the street. This is what we call retail eclipsing. These buildings in the periphery tend to get lost or eclipsed in a one-way environment because cars tend to move faster. Your field of vision narrows and you, you just don't need to pay as much attention in a one-way environment to what's on the side. So that, again, results in less exposure for those businesses. We really want to make, make it about driving to downtown rather than driving through downtown. Moving on to topography, everybody knows city of hills. How can we increase accessibility? We propose a couple of elevators in addition to the existing ones that we have. If midtown parking deck is redeveloped as proposed with the retail and the ground floor and everything, the elevator could be moved to the corner of the building to make it more accessible, as well as the destination amphitheater, if that's constructed, could have elevator access, which would be a huge, make a huge difference for ADA access between Jefferson and Commerce Streets. We also looked at the hopper. Right now, it's moving in sort of a back-and-forth fashion and we tried to reroute it a little bit to work on getting people up and down the hills since that's really where the challenge lies downtown. Several recommendations here to really try to decrease our dependency on the car in a downtown environment.
Question about the hopper.
Mm-hmm.
What is the time cycle? Is it 15-minute time cycle, right?
I think it was originally 10. Now it might be 15.
Is there any, any, like, in the proposal, and I haven't looked at that part, is there any, like, increase, a decrease of time or increase of vehicles, smaller vehicles that offer more, like, in Old Town, they have little, little small buses-
Mm-hmm.
In Old Town, and they're five minutes.
Right. So the hopper-
Is a big bus.
It, it is, and the, the equipment they have is what they have right now. In order to take this route onto Jefferson, Jefferson supposedly cannot support that large of a bus, which is why the plan does talk about looking at other options. You know, two, perhaps two smaller buses would do the job because you could, A, increase the route and B, decrease the headway if you had two vehicles. Of course, that's a question for GLTC and funding, but yeah.
The reason they got the big bus-
That I understand is because, I guess they got it for free or something, but also because they figured if it didn't work out-
Fleet.
They'd have a bus they could use for any other place.
Right.
Sorry. Just a question.
Mm-hmm. Looking at connecting communities, how can we better increase connections, not only within downtown, but to downtown, especially with our adjoining neighborhoods and colleges? One way we could do that is to provide direct access to our college population with an express bus route. We heard a lot from the college population about how cool downtown was, that it's a place to be and it, it makes, it makes coming to, coming to Lynchburg an easier choice because it's got a fun and happening downtown when they're choosing their colleges. So this could, this could really increase people coming from that age group to downtown. They're already here. We should capitalize on that if we can. We also looked at bike trail extensions, again, reducing our dependency on the car. We have a good amount of recreational riders, we think, but there's a potential for many more commuters or even riders using it as a mode of transportation when they come downtown to eat or come to one of the social or cultural events. How can we make that more viable for them? One way we could do it in Lynchburg, it's pretty much unavoidable that we're going to have stairs between, between our Main Streets, you know, Main, Church, Commerce, Court. One way we could do that is with wheeling ramps, which is just a little ramp on the side of the stairs that you can use to push up your bike. Gateways, these are our welcome mats to downtown. They signal your arrival, but also connect to the neighborhoods. They are our first impressions for many of people and also their last impressions on their way out. Here we see Main Street Bridge, which is currently under construction, and the plan does propose to look at some lane reduction on that bridge. There's excess capacity, meaning there's more lanes than we need based on the cars that are going through there. So bike ped facilities wherever possible. Try to make it a little bit more accessible for the residents of Diamond Hill to come downtown, not necessarily in a car. John Lynch-
Bridge or building?
So Main Street Bridge is under construction currently. I think the design, well, so the design on the left is the one that was chosen, the downtown Lynchburg with the brick and all that. The cross-section, I think they are actually putting the bridge back the way it was now, but the good thing about what's proposed here is it's just a barrier. It's a planter or something like that. So the sidewalk will be there as it was, but a bike lane, it doesn't take too much to add if you're just putting something on the surface of the road. John Lynch Bridge offers beautiful views of the downtown skyline, however, again, has what we call excess capacity, too many lanes, not bike ped friendly. So the plan proposes a multi-use path, probably reducing one of the outbound lanes from the city towards Amherst, giving a really nice connection to Amherst River Edge Park. And there will be another bike ped connection under the Carter Glass Bridge, which would create a really nice loop between our bike sys, our bike trail system as well as the Amherst River Edge Park. And finally, our last major gateway, long-term improvement, many enter Lynchburg through the 460 and Concord Turnpike area, but it's not the most welcoming necessarily to visitors. There's a lot of industrial truck-type traffic. There's the landfill and of course, the wastewater treatment plant. So the James River Parkway is a suggestion on how to separate visitors from that, as well as get them away from a few at-grade railroad crossings. So in conclusion, kind of circling back on what Tom said, downtown has come a long way, but we have to reimagine it and keep reimagining it. It's come a long way, but we think it has room left to grow and we think this is the blueprint to get us there. And I think we're ready for questions.
So David, if you wanted to come up and come on up to the table?
Can I start with a question?
Sure.
James River Parkway, so in the, back in the 80s, when there was a highway transportation plan that you could look at, they actually had a map of an extension of Main Street that would continue, is that the same, is that a similar path continues Main Street?
It would be nice on the Main Street.
Yeah. It'd be nice.
I just want to, I've never read through the entire thing. I've gotten a little bit over halfway. But I did turn through ahead there and I was discussing with my wife and we just have one concern in that I'm no longer getting any younger. And my wife and I want some precedence on the zip line. So I told her about the zip line. I said, we need to get that zip line going now so we enjoy it while we can. We like them zip lines.
We'll move that up-
I saw that and I was like, wow.
Move that up to short-term goals, huh?
But I mean, the parks that you have down there, my wife is a big walker, runner, whatever, a hobble. But it has so much potential to bring more walking athletic activities, a greater venue, and you get that loop going beneath the other bridge there to the Amherst side. They're like, holy cow. The things that could be done downtown, the bike races, foot races and stuff like that, it's just like, man, what a, what a great route someone could go on and make more interesting.
That was one of the things, first thing I want to say, this is the first plan I've seen like this, and maybe everybody has one like this, but I was impressed by how comprehensive it was. I, you know, I've read the, I've read the thing and I'm just going to have to read it again. I, I, you know, I've, I've read the, I've, I've read the thing, and I'm just gonna have to read it again, obviously, because there's just so much stuff in there. So I just want to say congratulations, because there was a lot of stuff I didn't think was stuff until you presented it and I realized, wow, it's important, so. I mean, I just, I can't find words, I was, that's how impressed I was. Um, number two, as we think about Mark's comment, this we're at a time now where, you know, fitness is a big deal from, from companies um to Lynchburg. I mean, it's a great idea to even push some of the ideas that we've said and, and to connect, I think, even some businesses that are already doing some wellness kind of stuff. Um, I spoke earlier about, you know, you know, do we look at situations where we maybe have a different you know, traffic pattern, if there's gonna be a, a walking kind of event, certainly if we're gonna have forty-five hundred people downs, downtown. You know, all I can think of is Charlottesville after a football game, I mean, obviously there are gonna have to be some changes. With that as a, with that as a backdrop, you know, we've, we've got some pretty big venue, or pretty good events that are going on now. Are we in a position to recommend different types of traffic patterns? I mean, you could have, you could test some of the ideas we're talking about, obviously not construction, but in traffic movement within those kinds of events. Is that something that falls to our purview to at least talk to somebody, or how does that work? Or is that even a decent idea?
So tell me a little bit more about what do you mean about change.
Well, I'm sitting here thinking about it, we've got, you know, this weekend, I think Winona and Judd's coming, coming down, which is a pretty big act for Lynchburg. I don't know that they'll have forty-five hundred people, but I suspect it'll be one of the larger crowds. So in that situation, moving people in and out, testing to see how that, how that could actually work could happen on a temporary basis, you know, in conjunction with, with traffic movers. I mean, it might be, you might sit down and say, you know, we're gonna have dedicated traffic to, to, to top parking areas. I'm, I'm not sure exactly how, what, how it would be configured, but it wouldn't, but we could test things that aren't configured as the way the traffic is now. So if you wanted to look at two-way traffic, if that made sense, maybe it makes sense to have two ways just in the center part of town because that connects all your, all your parking. I think there are opportunities to try some to see how, how traffic actually moves and to get an idea, and give people an idea, a hands-on idea about how that could be beneficial or, or, or not.
I also like the idea about the, the shop fronts in front of the, the parking areas downtown, because I think that's gonna be something that's gonna be critical to help support this plan is we, we have to have parking downtown, there's no F's and S's about it. It's gonna have to be more centrally located. And last month, I was up there in DC with, there with my son for medical, and we went out to eat in Bethesda, and they've done a bang-up job there. And I was Googling restaurants, and my biggest hangover was where would I park? And they, they had the parking lots vertical, and they were very discreetly hidden from sight, but you could find the sign for it, but there were shops all around it, and there was ample parking there. And I was just like, wow, this is pretty neat, they have an elevator for people like me to go up and down. And there were multiple places like that, and I, I just, one of these things like, man, that, that'd be really great if we had something like that. And when that, you showed that picture with the shops in front of the parking lots, like, yeah, we, we need more stuff like that. Restaurants, um bars, whatever, like that nightlife area, because that place was, on a Tuesday night, it was hopping in downtown Bethesda, like, holy cow.
Marty, I'm sorry, go ahead.
But no, go ahead.
I was gonna say about the parking, you've gotta remember, this is a twenty forty plan. And we don't know what we're gonna be driving or if we're gonna be driving in twenty forty, I don't know if I'll be alive in twenty forty, but I hope so. But, you know, I was in Washington last week, we paid fifty bucks a night to park our car. We didn't drive it at all, you know, we took Uber or we walked wherever we went, or we took the metro. And Lynchburg doesn't have a metro and never will, but it does have buses, it does have bikes, it does have walk, you can walk. And we may have self-driving cars, we, you know, people may be taking more Ubers and that kind of thing. Or, or, or car sharing, so there'll be fewer cars, people might, you know, you might be driving a car to work and somebody might be driving your car around all day and you, you know, it's not your car, it's, it's ride-sharing and stuff.
We do like the idea though, to that point, that, that's why I like the flexibility of it. I mean, to your Uber comment, I'd love to be able to sit down and figure out how much Uber really, really accounts for traffic. I have no idea how you find that number. But be that as you, I, I think it's, it's certainly more than it was, we didn't have it before. But you look at the, the thing you did on the nine hundred and one Commerce Street example, okay, so to your point, we have a bunch of cars, so we only have retail on the, on the street level. And over time, maybe there are self-driving cars, maybe, you know, people, you know, walk everywhere. It'd be very easy to add retail to those other, you just build into those other, you know, to those other spaces, because you've already got the superstructure in place. Um, so to me, that, you know, you're not in a situation that we had in the past where you go, all right, we got this warehouse, and then what do we do with it? You know, you've already got the, you've already got this, the infrastructure in place. So I thought that, that's something I made, that made a lot of sense I hadn't thought about.
Yeah, what's so great about this conversation to me is that we, you are actually focusing on people instead of the automobile. And that's entirely what the plan is about. Again, park once and walk. And if we want the downtown to be successful, that is the model. And park once, then maybe you take a bike share, maybe you ride the hopper, maybe you bike, um, you know, maybe you take up the elevator. Multiple, multiple, multiple different modes of, of how to get around, but leave the vehicle and get out and experience what makes downtown downtown.
Yeah, and.
About twenty-five percent of available space is parking, how much of that's public parking?
The, um.
I mean, I've, I've just ballpark.
So it's twenty-five percent of surface lots. And there's not, and there's definitely more private surface lots than, than public surface lots. I mean, you can, yeah, the surface lots are in pink. The decks are in darker, darker shades.
So I have a question about, I have a, I have a bunch of questions, I wrote a bunch of questions down, I won't ask them all, I might email them. But, but you know, looking at the, you know, the city owns the two largest parking decks. Is there any incentive to have somebody develop the lower level to actually encourage that lower level use of them? I saw that, so one of the things I feel like we do in the city is we tear something out and have nothing to replace it for two years. So to actually consider tearing a parking deck down and then rebuilding it, then we have a major, then we do have a major parking issue. But if there was a way to utilize that space and have private development money actually build more parking if they wanted to and utilize that lower level, it's, it's a way to kind of push that. Another question I thought is, well, why don't we actually, back to what you're saying, have bike, bike share kiosks or places that people can park a little bit outside of the downtown, you know, still downtown, but a little bit on the periphery with their bikes? I see people all the time bringing their bikes, but if, one of the issues is we don't quite have that network. So if we have some kind of way to move this plan forward, it seems to me like we should really work on those on the, on the bike and the pedestrian movements more than anything. Getting access on, on the bridge across twenty-nine, because people will park there and ride, ride across or further down the, down the road and allow more bike use. I mean, it seems to me, that's one thing, I see my neighbors, we, we ride downtown all the time. And, and we're lucky, we live in Rivermont, but, you know, I think that, that's one of the questions I had is what, that's a, seems to me a small-scale cost as we move forward. And, you know, one of the things you said, vision, talking to city councilors, particularly one I have in mind, he's like, two-way streets, it's crazy, and I'm like, we gotta, you know, it makes total sense. But if we get more and more people, eventually the, and they're all heading towards downtown instead of trying to go through downtown, which is what I think some people think, it actually helps people see that vision more. So to me, it seems like if you, if you start with the easiest things and things that require the least amount of money, but they actually have the most bang for the buck, it seems like it would be the pedestrian. Is there, is there a plan for that? I mean, I, this, this, I love this, this is great, I think it's great, it's better than Sasaki, but.
So there, there is actually a list of short and mid and long-term goals. Uh, the plan is pretty specific about the uh on-street parking and, and the two-way traffic. Um, that it should be implemented very soon. Primarily, well, not primarily, just one of the reasons is the benefit it will have in circulation during construction, which is inevitable, right? Uh, we've, we've got to replace our, our aging infrastructure. AEP has aging infrastructure, it's just going to aid in navigating around downtown. But again, getting back to the walkability standpoint, it slows the traffic down. Um, and since we're in a work session, we should be very frank. The, the only negative that anyone has brought to my attention about two-way traffic is loading, is how do you deal with the trucks? And the answer is loading zones. Right? Timed loading zones, enforced loading, loading zones strategically placed throughout downtown. Why should we base the entire future of downtown on letting delivery trucks block a lane of traffic? When we can deal with that through loading zones on the side of the street? It makes no logical sense.
Like, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of, my, my business deals with hospitality, and some of them don't accept deliveries after eight, why don't we have those kind of restrictions? You know, I actually was downtown three weeks ago and saw a Pepsi truck and, and Virginia Eagle block the entirety of Main Street because a tractor trailer was coming down and they were parked on opposite sides of the road. Cars could get through, but the truck couldn't, so all the traffic was blocked. It was like, why is it that we, we, we insist on allowing that? Other places don't do that. You know, so some places really have restrictions on that. So why haven't we done that?
It recommends timed loading zones and enforcement. And as, as part of the efforts where um the city was moving forward with two-way, um, of course, the, the brakes got put on that um in lieu of the downtown plan, but in, in their work in preparing for the two-way conversion, um, our, our consultant, um, not Hill Studio, but the consultant on the downtown waterline plan, waterline streetscape project, rather, um, actually went out, did a lot of coordination with businesses on every block of Main, every block of Church, and said, where's, where should the loading zone be? One per block. At one, I think the eleven hundred block of Church didn't even want a loading zone, they just wanted parking. But it can definitely be done, and a lot of the work already was done. There was a lot of outreach to the delivery companies themselves. Um, most of them were just surprised that we were even contacting them. They said, thanks for the heads up, but we're delivery companies, this is what we do, this is our job, we deal with it in other cities.
I've got a question about uh traffic flow and.
I absolutely love the proposed Rivermont Bridge plan, which is down to one lane in each direction, bike lanes on both sides, and, I mean, that's what you put up there for a second, I didn't realize it was Rivermont, because you were talking about the bridge over the expressway, but the one you put up there has bike lanes and.
Yeah, that was Main Street, but it is.
Similar setup as Rivermont.
Okay, well, anyway, yeah, I don't see that one on Main Street, I, I see four lanes of traffic here, but.
Yeah, Rivermont, Main Street and.
John Lynch.
John Lynch Bridge, all chains.
Yeah, okay, good.
And Rivermont's two lanes, not three.
Two, yeah, and, and then, um, what, what I'm wondering, my question, short question is, is the traffic worse at, say, five o'clock when, eh, you know, most offices close at five and everybody goes home at the same time, although often people come in at seven o'clock or eight o'clock or nine o'clock or ten o'clock if they're retail maybe. But it seems to me they may come in at a slower pace, but all leave at the same time, or am I wrong? I'm just thinking if, like, Rivermont Hill, if you kept the hill in front of Jones Library, two lanes going up the hill away from town, because you might get behind a slow truck or something like that and want to pass. But it seems like there's no sense in having two lanes coming down Rivermont Hill if you're gonna have one lane on the bridge and you only have one lane once you get into downtown, so why would you have all of a sudden a Speedway, which is what we have now? Rivermo, all of Rivermont Avenue is one lane in each direction, and then all of a sudden you get to that hill and you can just go sixty miles an hour, which is dangerous.
With a, with a, with a suite of bike lanes.
Yeah, terrible bike lane, yeah.
I'm thinking we could raise money by having a raffle as to who could make it through there at rush hour on a bicycle.
But anyway, I don't know if you can answer my question.
So are you suggesting that uh Rivermont should be narrowed even further up?
Yeah, unless maybe, you know, going out, if you wanted to have a passing lane going out. But I don't see any reason for the passing lane coming in, I assure there are slow people.
Better to slow people down leaving so they decide to stay in town and wait. And have them come, come in.
But I definitely recommend.
But I, but the, when they did the traffic study you talked about, Rachel, did they have the four-way stops when they did that traffic study?
What traffic study do you mean?
You're talking about the one where they were looking at doing the two-way traffic?
Mm-hmm.
So they'll have an idea about.
There is a model of what it did to traffic when everything was converted to four-way stops rather than the lights we have now.
Right.
And two-way.
And, yeah, two-way.
Because I feel like it's slower anyway, I feel like that, that, to your, traffic calming, to use your word, I think that's, that's.
It was slower, but it wasn't to the point where we wouldn't do it.
Well, part of the thing too.
It had pretty much the same capacity as what I recall.
Right.
And that's because two-way traffic reduces the need to circle the blocks, you actually, you could have fewer cars, they might be moving slightly slower.
You get a more direct.
But you get about the same capacity, it's a trade-off.
But Tom, yes, I would definitely recommend one lane on Rivermont, on the Rivermont Hill, because especially if you've got one lane in each direction on the bridge. The main reason I recommend it is because I have to turn out of D Street every day, and it's extremely dangerous because you can't see anything coming down the hill for the cars parked. In the old days, before I was ever in that building, um, it was, it was one lane each street, there was parking in front of my building. And therefore, you could nose out and nobody was gonna hit you because there was a car parked to my right. Now, there are only cars parked to my left, I can't see around them or over them, and there's nothing to my right, so they're gonna just run into me.
So is what I'm hearing, the plan commission would like for us to work something into the plan about that? Because one of the major things we were looking at was connecting better to communities and.
This is what we have, so I don't know what you.
She wants it to not just be on the bridge, but to go on.
Yeah.
I guess the text just doesn't say it clearly.
Hit and killed right in that area.
I think, so when we bike, when, when I've biked to downtown by myself, I'll often stay on Rivermont. When I've biked with my family, we go on Cabell. E- even with the bike lanes, it's, you know, bike lanes are fine, but I think if you have continuity, instead of having bike lanes for four blocks and then none, and then more bike lanes, you know, being able to not have to go down Cabell to go downtown with my family, it'd be nice if we can utilize that to have a wider area for bikes.
And I just, to emphasize, I love the bike lanes on the bridge, they're necessary. Um, I get run off the sidewalk all the time by bikes, I walk on the bridge, and I'm always getting run off or I have to go over here like this and nearly jump off the bridge to get away from the bikes, or they might be coming up behind me. And if I've got my ear pods on or something, I'm not, I can't even hear.
If anybody's walking a dog, it's a biker.
Yeah, so, um, and even off the bridge, between the bridge and, and Fifth Street on that curve, it's very dangerous, because the bikers don't want to be in the street because it's a blind curve, especially with the grass growing into the street. Enough said.
I feel like an idiot, because I never thought about that section being two-lane when it's one lane on either side. I mean, that's just an accident waiting for a place to happen, I never thought about that.
One of the things I'd like to see is a way to bring people from the outlawing areas into downtown. One of the things I'd like to see is a way to bring people from the outlying areas into downtown without having to drive your car. Having, having just come back from Germany visiting my daughter, I was just blown away about how well they can move people. And how they even have the, the, the smaller trolley car type things going down the middle of the road. And I said, man, why can't we have that trolley back in the middle of Rivermont again? And, and get people from Boon's Borough Shopping Center to downtown, let people put parking decks out on the outskirts. And bring people in on these little small commuter trains. Put one out there on the other side of town and bring them in that way.
That's in the twenty eighty plan. That's a lot of money.
But, but the, um, the express bus plan that they just talked about for the colleges would help a lot. If you could get from Liberty or Lynchburg, University of Lynchburg or Randolph into town without stopping at every corner. And taking about forty-five minutes probably to get from Randolph-Macon to downtown when, if you had an express bus.
Point is, but we, we got more Lynchburg past Randolph-Macon.
You do.
And if we could get something going further out.
You can't stop everywhere.
Well, make that, that the non-stop thing and have certain hubs, everyone goes here and. I mean, they, they, they don't stop every place, they're, they have designated stopping places.
So the connecting communities chapter does talk about trying to connect those outer neighborhoods in better. And it includes improvements to the buses, of course, these are expensive improvements. Cause if you need to stop at every stop, you gotta have more buses if you want to, you know, have them come more frequently. Um, but there was some analysis done in that chapter about, look at, you know, how much of Lynchburg does have bus stops accessible within walking distance? But if you actually were to take the bus from Timberlake and try and get downtown, it'll take you an hour and a half. So how would anybody choose? That was actually much better than other areas. I mean, it was literally ninety minutes from Timberlake to get downtown.
Cause I was even looking at the, you know, at the wheel that you had showing where downtown shoppers were, or traffic was coming from. And we're not, we're, we're missing, we're, that's, that wheel or that representation was not representative of the higher population areas of Lynchburg.
Was that in the economics section?
Yes, ma'am, and I'm wondering if, I mean, this isn't the venue for that, but I'm interested in why. Why we were getting it from where we were getting it, who was coming? As opposed to other situations where it would seem to me to be as democratically potential. Half the same demographic potential, we weren't getting travelers from there. And that would, I mean, that may be a bus issue, that may be, there's already a shopping area there that people are going to that's closer, more convenient, I'm not sure. But in a world where you're looking at Lynchburg as being a unique destination, then it shouldn't matter what's close to you. It ought to be something that you're, that you ought to come, and I would expect that a more, um, representative spread.
So I don't, I'm not sure what the answer is to that, but as far as connecting communities, there's increasing frequency with buses. There's also increasing, um, the amenities at the stations, is there a way to make them more enticing to visitors? Brand them somehow, include timers that say the bus will be here in four minutes.
I was even wondering from like a short rail standpoint, maybe you bring people in, give them a bike.
I'm sorry?
Maybe you bring them in to a certain point, you give them a bike, or give them the option to ride a bike.
Absolutely.
Or maybe you give them an option to pick up an Uber, but you think about it in a short rail standpoint, so we take you to here. I mean, obviously, you know, a parking ride does that, but this, there might be ways to play that game.
Yeah, absolutely.
Differently.
Then, other than bus, the other component is extending those bike trails. There's a map in there that shows how can these bike trails reach out into neighborhoods further? Can we do more spur trails? Cause the neighborhood, I mean, the trails right now, they run behind a lot of neighborhoods. But there's not a lot of connection points actually into them. So then you have everybody driving their car to a trailhead to then come into downtown. Is there a way to just get them straight from their house on their bike to the trail downtown?
You know, I've, I've asked several times about having a, doing some kind of study on trails and bike trails. And I, I don't think we have any study done yet for that, do we? I mean, I know we have a bunch of these plans, but I think that.
We have written two thousand, the Greenways plan, a while back.
Because this seems like some of the trails, I was looking at the, the connections they showed several along Campbell Avenue. Um, but you know, one thing it doesn't show is Oddfellow's Road, which has a kind of separated bike path all the way up. Over beyond four sixty and it seemed like a pretty easy connection. They showed a, you know, it shows a high, uh, express bus service to Liberty, but it doesn't act, you know, take advantage of that trail. Showing that trail on there, which I think a lot of students, not really that long of a ride, it's all downhill to downtown. Which you get them coming in, you know, that's the thing. But I do think there's a, it would be neat to see this tied into something like that in a broader sense. So that, you know, living on Rivermont, we do have bike lanes. But, you know, we have really poor access to the best bike trail, even though it's a three-minute, four-minute ride if I get on my bike and go to Hansmull Road. You know, but, but there, I was driving down there today thinking how nice it would be if we had, if we were able to have a separate path. It would, a lot of people along Rivermont would access that trail that way. That they access it down Langhorn, they go up to Langhorn or down, um. Boston, but you know, the, this lower part, there's a lot of people who would love to see that kind of access. So being able to tie something like this in with that would be really, I think, interesting, to say the least.
I know, there've been some studies about that, and I'm benefit of having that kind of trail stuff too. Could have a cousin, cousin that's done that, I mean, it's amazing to me.
Yeah, he's.
You would think would be.
And that, didn't, didn't. You, didn't y'all try, um, the street parking, didn't you try to put meters there at one point?
On street parking, there was a pilot project around the community market a couple of years ago.
And it didn't, did it, did I hear it didn't go over well?
It was discussed in the plan, um, very carefully. I think it may have been flawed from the start because, you know, we only tackled it with a couple of blocks or a block right here. So why, you would just avoid those parking spaces and park one block away. A pilot like that really should, should encompass a much broader area. So as we instituted paid parking, we would want to do it on all of Main Street, all of Dirt Street. So you're not just kind of creating a little mini-market where you've got this really expensive parking and this free parking right here. And so everybody else would go that way.
And I never used, yeah, I'm one of those who never paid a nickel for parking down there. But, uh, how did, how did it work or how would it work? I mean, can you do it with your phone or your credit card? You don't have to have quarters anymore, I understand, right?
It just depends on the meters that we would go with, I think we would probably do something like that.
If I, you know, was running late and didn't have time to park in the free lot or whatever. And had to park on the street and came to a meeting here and it lasted three hours instead of two. And I'd paid for two hours, am I gonna get a ticket or can I, on my phone, re-up or that kind of thing?
I do not have an answer for that.
North Carolina and we got caught on a ferry and I added three hours to my parking on my cell phone on a ferry.
Okay.
I can't believe that that technology, I mean, you know, if you can, I mean, if you can do it off an EZ Pass situation, I gotta believe that. That would transfer pretty quickly and gosh, that would make it, I mean, at that particular point, you could almost have an EZ Pass program, for lack of a better phrase. Where people are gonna be downtown a lot, buy, you know, a, a whatever and comes off your phone or whatever. Automatic refundable, refillable rather, and go ahead and, 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 nice thing about that is you pay upfront. So you've got cash that you're using on that.
Our parking managers will versed in.
What technology is out there, so we can certainly ask them.
The other is.
It's there. The current app does allow that.
Well, the other, the other thing I keep thinking about and, and I realize that I'm probably gonna be alone in this. Cause I cannot believe how young the average age of Lynchburg is. Cause I've looked at everything and I cannot believe it's going down based on what I've looked at. And yet, when I look around, I see a lot of older people. And when you start talking about access, particularly downtown, um, forget the zip line. I mean, we'd have to go to the veterinarian to get some kind of harness to put them on there. But in all seriousness, Lynchburg sucks for handicap access. You know, I don't know why the people at, at Credit Terry aren't in jail. Based on the way they handle their handicap access and, and shoemakers as, as part of that. Cause that's the most screwed up situation I've ever seen. But as we talk about the elevators, um, I thought it was fascinating that they were looking at, whatever the name of that police is in, in South America. And I always think about it as the drug cartel, I can't pronounce the name. Is that what it is? I always wanted to call it Medellin, which I was pretty confident was not correct. And I'm an English major, I can do that, I have a card. But the, but all the, but the whole, all the ideas about moving people, either through elevators or escalators. Or that little cool thing that looked like a shark fin coming out of the ground that you put your foot on and took you up the hill. You know, those kinds of things don't fit in well with my, with my aged parents' comment. But we need to do something like that, um, period. Because we've talked, I mean, the way things are going, it's not just the old people anymore. I mean, if you have to do anything on, on Twelfth Street Hill, you need to be airlifted. And when we've got situations like that, you're always gonna have a car community because it's gonna be really difficult for you to have some kind of a alternative. So as we think about this, I don't know what the answer is, cause I've racked my brain trying to figure it out. And you had much better ideas than I had in the plan, I thought. But that's something that needs to be looked at pretty quickly too. Particularly given the fact that if there's something like those cool little shark fins, as a, for instance, you're already tearing up the road anyway. You know, so it doesn't make sense to think about those, that kind of, of situations sooner rather than later.
I think the answer is not to ignore the alternatives anymore.
Pardon?
Not to ignore the alternatives anymore.
Right.
And which, when you ignore the alternatives, yeah, you do have to focus on the automobile.
Right, right.
Right?
You're talking about, you're talking about.
Doing the exact things that you're saying.
Doing, you're looking at something where you're not constantly in a car.
Correct.
Yeah, it's all of it, it's the bike share, it's better service on the hopper, you know, better bus connectivity in general, the hill climbs. The escalator, it's, it's a holistic approach.
I mean, even if we did, even if you had the bike go up the stairs with the little gutters, I thought that was a cool idea. You know, for bikes and stuff, I mean, something easy, but, you know, again, um. I'd love to see us push that a little bit more and all, under the guise of what Tom talked, there are, there are quick things that we can do. There are early hits that we can make that aren't gonna, you know, be, they'd be quick wins. Be quick wins.
Well, obviously first step is to adopt the plan. And then we can start chiseling away.
Let's talk about that a little bit, cause I'm running around on that one a little bit now. So, okay, so we've talked about a bunch of good ideas, let's just for the sake of argument, say we had a bunch of them, we're gonna stick them in the plan, we're gonna revamp it. What's, what's the next, what's the next step?
From here?
Yeah, from here.
Well, it goes to council, and if, if council adopts it. Then we'll look at starting to implement things, but it's just like anything else, any other plan that we do. It obviously has to compete for funding.
Right.
The, the, the way a lot of this is going to get implemented is through the utility, uh, project, streetscape. Because we're tearing the streets up anyway. But if you read the plan, there's also the public-private partnerships, uh, there's other recommendations for, for how to fund things. But you know, it, it's also a matter of, you know, once the plan is adopted, let's sit down, take a look at some quick things that, that can be done.
Well, the other thing we, that came out, at least in the means that I was in on the, on the preparatory side, we said it a bunch of times. If we sit around and wait for, for, you know, city to do it or for somebody else to do it, a business or whatever, things aren't gonna happen. Is there a way to, to take this plan and connect it back into that private network in such a way? That, that people might, I mean, you know, Nancy's all about the, the Rivermont Avenue corridor because that's where her business is. She really wants to do walkability. So she sits down and she goes back and she says, gosh, I could, I could double my, the people, I could double the foot traffic through my business if we could just get this done. So I'm gonna do like Rachel Flynn said, I'm gonna call the historical, I don't even know who does that anymore. You know, it's sad, but anyway, I'm gonna call these people, we're gonna start a grassroots program. Use that as an example, I'm trying to figure out a way that we can lay this thing out in such a way that you can tie into some of that early on. Make sure that we're communicated in such a way that, that's doing, I mean, there wasn't, there hadn't been anything on the news about. You know, about the meeting the other night, which I thought was interesting. The, the presentation that y'all did on Monday.
Uh, it was on W S L S, the presentation that we gave to, the business alliance this morning was on S E C. I think it was that they were interviewing me and the camera was looking over. One of these, it's just really that you brought this up because I think. And I hate to kind of make a, a, a plan that appealed to the public, it might not be interested in this, but there's a, in each chapter, there's a, you'll see a chart at the, at the end. Where this team has already started to say, alright, you know, this, we don't want a shelf document, we want to dive into implementing this thing as quickly. And so what we tried to do was to, to put together a list of short-term strategies, midterm and long-term. So eat, all the text is, it gets into a chart. And, you know, short-term was, you know, what can we do without a whole lot of money, but needs to be done right now. Midterm is more, we need to maybe write grants for some of these things.
Thinking about how, cause I, I thought that stuff was great.
Yeah, I thought you guys would like that.
Looking at, figuring out how to read it and get, and, and really, you know, be able to make my mind quit looking like this and start looking at what's on the page, which is the hardest part. But how do we take that and figure out how we push that into, into the public venue? So that, um, I mean, from a city council, the easiest situation is everybody's clamoring to city, city council. You know, we want to do our Rivermont, we need to have that walkway, that's, that's a key thing, we really need to do that, it's gonna get quicker. It's, it's gonna get quicker things, so I'm trying to figure out. I mean, the question I'm asking is, is there a way to take this? And either build a, a superstructure that would allow that communication to take place? Or something that would make it easier for more people outside of a, you know, more of a private sector to take, to take advantage of?
Well, I don't think what you're saying is much different than the model we had with the two thousand Sasaki plan. Because once the plan was adopted, um, you know, the city council was very good about dedicating funding. To downtown, really for the past eighteen years or so. And the, the private investment follows the public investment, right? And when the private business owners and developers seeing the city following its own plan and investing in it. They're gonna buy into it also, and they did, right? And that's why. Absolutely, but it's not just our vision, it's the community's vision for downtown. And, um, then, once everybody buys into that vision, then it's kind of game on, right? Because then it opens up the private dollars, the public dollars, the public-private partnerships together, which we've done. You know, if there's an area that's, you know, we really need this right now, maybe it's a, a business improvement, there's, there's all kind of different.
But I mean, to me, this is overly simplistic, but it's interesting that you talk about the, the mayor from, from Charleston. Um, and I think the vision comment is right on, and in my mind, the first thing I thought about was, having the vision was wonderful. Because about the time he showed up, it's about the time Charleston got leveled by whatever it was, Hugo or whatever, I forget what the name of the storm was. And that insurance money pumped into, to, into, um, into Charleston. So everybody had, everybody had a chance at a funding stream because of those dollars. But without the vision, you might have gotten your house fixed, but you wouldn't have gotten your neighborhood fixed.
Gone back to the status quo.
Right, and I think, so I think that's really key.
Are you asking for a hurricane?
No, I'm asking for, I'm asking for something, I'm thinking about time's alternative, cause I'm not, uh. But I'm trying to figure if we, there's some way that we can, that, that we can light that match without having a hurricane.
Cause you're getting excited about the plan.
Well, one thing I, just case, was it moving forward stuff there? One thing, uh, uh, on pace ninety-four of this, there, one thing that really excited me was this thing called Parklets. Cause being out in Germany, I like this idea of being able to sit on the sidewalk with coffee for two hours. Cause they don't rush people in Germany or in Europe. You go in the chair until you decide to give it up there, but that, that idea is so neat there. And I don't know, with the city, or how, how would a, a restaurant owner get that in front of their place there to add to it?
Yeah, that, that could be a very quick thing to do right there, um, you know.
I mean, would they be able to petition the city, come to us and say, hey, I want to have a Parklet?
They'd give up their parking for it, for sure.
But, I mean, I think that.
Parking for it.
Uh, oh yeah, absolutely, um.
That particular spot, the, where Scabitular was petitioning for that for years, but it hadn't happened yet.
And they got like Benjamin's Downtown there, I think, with that pizza. And they got like Benjamins downtown there, I think, with that pizza place here, but they have the inverted one where they, you have that outdoor eating.
Patio, yeah.
Yeah.
But it, it goes into the building instead of out there, like, man, that'd be so cool. And, and coming back from yours, like, man, that, that, that'd be really neat to have something like that. We just had to have coffee, pizza, whatever, and watch the day go by.
I, yeah, I mean. Yeah, that would, yeah, that's a dream.
Yeah, but that's, that's why it's so important to get these things in the plan. Because what's, was, I mean, it's exciting to me and very interesting to me is that we're even sitting here talking about the idea. Because now we're visioning differently, right? We're not just saying, well, no, we, we can't do Parklets, that, that won't work, right? We're actually entertaining new things, right? Um, so yeah, I think the, I think the, the, the way forward is to, you know, adopt the plan, accept these new ideas. And then, yeah, of course, uh, business owners should come to the city and say, hey, what about putting a Parklet, Parklet right here?
And I'll add, um, everyone should go home and Google Parking Day. It's like a nerdy planner holiday, and it's in September every year. And they actually take over a parking space and do a park for a day. So I don't know if you guys remember the picture on this page. That's, it's so easy to do. They do it for one day and then they take it all down. A lot of design studios will take over a parking space and design it for a day. Um, and so it's that, it's just that easy. It's.
You could do a pop-up in a parking space?
Little studio should come do one.
Let's do it. I'm in.
Part, Planning Commission can do one.
I'm down. We, a Planning Commission meeting could be in a parking space.
Planning Commission Parklet, yeah.
Of course, all I can think about is it snowed and they dumped all, they dumped all the snow right here and they've taken all those railings are gone. Completely wiped out.
Actually, Parking Day's in September, so.
But that's, that was negative, please strike that off the record.
But, again, you're thinking differently. We don't design cities around the snowplow and we shouldn't design.
Exactly right. But I'll have to admit, I think about that every time I go down, every time I go down off Fifth Street. I'd see those little indentions and I'd think, oh God, but.
Sorry. If we have comments, so let's say we, as we sit and think, I mean, we could probably sit and just kind of bounce stuff back and forth for a long time, but would it be helpful if we went and then put together some coherent, logical comments that could be put in that plan? Is that something that could be added to the plan? Is that something you would entertain? If we presented, for example, if we both were sending you something about extending this up Rivermont, you know, is that something that we could?
We're presenting it, it's in effect becoming your plan now, right? And if it's something you want in it, please let us know, but be aware, it comes to you on the twenty-second for a public hearing, right? So we need to get it in there quickly, right? And that doesn't say that, okay, when you're done and you're, and you're satisfied with it and you're ready to move it on to, to council, we want it to be right, right? So I mean, we'll take the time necessary to do that. But yeah, the sooner you could get us your thoughts, uh, the sooner we could get those into the document.
I feel like that's a really good, a good thing for us to do. 'Cause I, there's probably things that we could all comment on, and if we can get it down, instead of just, you know, maybe getting out of the mix or something like that, actually get it down on words and, and send them over to you and see if that's something that could be rolled in before the twenty-second and do that in a, in a day or two. What do you all think?
Well, I think they're, I, I agree with that. I just, I, I like what they have right here.
Oh, I think it's great, yeah.
Things that just really.
Right.
Excited me that I want to see this plan moving sooner than later.
I've got to get, I'm, I'm looking through this and this isn't the best way, the best way to look through it, but I'm still looking for the, um, for the, like, I would love to see that, that, uh, that pedestrian and, and trail thing. I don't know, where does that fall in the implementation?
Are you talking about out in Rivermont?
In, in any of, in any of those, you know, actually, the one that first caught my eye was the John Lynch Bridge. You know, 'cause I actually have done that run a lot on broken glass and all kinds of junk that's on the sides of that road. And would love to see, see that.
That's something to be done.
Now, that's something that requires, because it's a state highway, there's special things.
So John Lynch Bridge, convert a portion of the underutilized John Lynch into a multi-use trail connecting Amherst. That's a short-term strategy.
Oh, it's a short-term, yeah, so.
The, the ferry belongs to the city.
It does?
Yep, so.
As long as you have lane, a lane, it really matters.
I didn't realize there was a trail up there yet. I felt a little bit, I didn't look up to come up.
Yeah, right now, you, there's a lot of debris.
No, they're for them to make recommendations on the implementation when we get their input on the capital improvement program for the year? As we go into budget season?
Yeah, I think what we'd really like to see is, is there something that you think is missing from the plan? Like the better, uh, bike lane connection up into Rivermont. That, that's something that we can see, but when we actually get into the nuts and bolts of implementing it, I think Anne's exactly right, that would come later when we actually start looking at the C I P and prioritizing, uh, your workflow for the next year. Get the zip line up.
Well, things like the, things like the local historic district, would that be something, would that overlay be part of this? Would that be a revamped zoning plan?
That would be a re-zoning designated. Um, there's some work involved.
But there would be zoning that would be specific around the, around whatever our historic overlay, local historic overlay would be.
And that isn't a cost issue.
There is money involved, obviously, at, at advertising and writing guidelines and those types of things. But, I mean, it's not multi-million dollar projects, right?
Right, so that one, we could move on quickly after the plan is adopted. It would require another public process because it's a zoning overlay, yeah.
I guess what I'm asking is, to, to Tom's example, would that be something I would highlight as, you know, we either need to look at it on a site-specific or an area-specific basis today? I mean, whether that would be a new zoning situation or whether it'd be a revamp of, of current?
Or when it sits on top of the, the existing zoning, is how that works.
I just don't want to have that one, that one to me would be one that would be easily law, yeah, we talked about, it sounds like a great idea, but nobody ever did anything about it.
Well, I, I, you know what, um, Plan Commission could very easily implement that after, uh, not implement it, but, but initiate that after the plan is adopted. You could come in one day and, and you guys could discuss it as a body and say, you know what, city staff? We just adopted this downtown plan, we want you to go start the process to designate it as a local historic.
Action.
And we'll say, well, we're doing all this, but we'll, we'll get it done, but you know, yeah. You guys have that authority to initiate a lot of these things.
Okay.
Well, that's, that's good. I, I guess, uh, does anybody else have any, anything they want to add? I think we need to make sure.
I just had one comment on page one seventy-eight. The landfill, the, the James River Scenic Parkway, I was going back reviewing that there. I see here, we talked about the, we're going to be expanding the water treatment facility. And the, the landfill is going to be closed. Is part of that, like, turning that into like the Norfolk, Virginia Beach, Mount Trashmore Park or something?
The, when we're done with this and actually we're already starting to talk about it, the, the next phase of the contract with Hill Studio was Tyreana Pleasant Valley.
Okay.
So that plan will be coming to you after downtown.
Okay. I, I just looked at that thing, but it may be great to recover some use of that.
Yep, and that's one of the key parts of that update to that plan.
But I do think the settling period is like twenty or thirty years because of these methane pockets. And so we turn it into a dog park and you're walking feely across, you disappear into a methane hole.
It's interesting to see how they, they all interact, you know, this with other plans and Tyreana. But I think if we, if, uh, if we're all ready to, to go, we can, but we should encourage one another to send any ideas on via email. And, um, if there's any other questions, if everybody's ready to go, someone can.
If you could really get that to us by Friday, it'd be very helpful. Um, Nygaard is, I'm sorry, Ms. Nygaard is the, uh, she's doing it in a special process, uh, software and design, right? Which none of us are fortunate enough to have or smart enough to use, but anyway, if we could get them by Friday, she's going to be off, um, the majority of next week, so we could incorporate those in.
I'd just like to say this is, this is a super job, and I really appreciate all the effort y'all put in, the vision going forward.
Definitely a team effort, for sure. A lot of. It's, a lot of people have given input and worked on this plan.
I'm, I'm just excited. I just hope I get to see this stuff happen and get to go in the zip line.
Well, since we're done.
Heard that we want to include is narrowing Rivermont as it goes out of downtown or into downtown. And maybe the temporary road closures that you brought up, Bob, is like talking about them as an option maybe? Those are the two things that I've starred here that.
Well, I mean, I mean, now that you showed me like the, uh, parking space for a day. You know, we kind of have that with First Friday, when we don't have that. But I mean, a, a broader concept, you know, would, would be that kind of an idea. I thought that, I thought that was a great idea. But that pop-up Parking Day, I think makes a lot of sense. I think, and I think that goes back to what I said earlier, because when people can see this stuff, I mean, let's take a stupid example. I've lived in Lynchburg for most of my formative years, at least the ones I can remember. So, um, you know, I never thought about that section, and it is. I speed up like everybody else to try and get around that truck to get up there. I mean, that's an example of, it's always been that way, so why, you know, you don't even notice it. And yet, if you can do things like, that are different and make people go, I never thought about that. Parklets are like that. God, what a great idea. I'd love to do that, you know? Um, even if you did something like in the, um, I think the gathering area in, in front of the city hall, um, elevator, that my grandfather would never ride up 'cause he was afraid of getting stuck, and I finally talked him into doing it, and sure enough, he got stuck that one time. So it's always been kind of a special location for me. But, you know, to have something, to have like a, to have like your, your Park Day there. 'Cause now people are seeing it, people are going, I had no idea that was even possible. I had no idea that that was, was something, that's much nicer than what I thought it could be. That's not what I thought it would be at all. This is great. You know, that, that's how, I, I think that sets a lot of the fire.
That's what happens when you don't accept the status quo and you think differently.
But you know how it is in Lynchburg? The other alternative intro for your speech is, I'm here today to talk about the big C. That would be change. And then you could wait for everybody to shudder in the, in the audience and then you could go ahead with the rest of it.
But, you know, when I've given the, uh, presentation about the history and talking about saving those buildings, when I talk about those buildings almost being torn down, it's almost a gasp in the audience, right? Because they couldn't believe that we would have considered tearing those buildings down, not we, but someone would have.
I, I remember what was mentioned, you know, I was working in Genworth and it was like, huh, Genworth, like, don't tear them down. We don't want anything pretty to look at anymore.
Well, I'd, I'd do a standard thing, for all the presentations I give, I said, you know, we're going to find out who just came to Lynchburg and who's lived there all their life. I said, how many, how many, and, and they said, now look around the room, because you're going to watch people's faces and I can tell you who's just showed up. I said, there, how many Lynchburg does it take to change a light bulb? Well, it takes six. Takes one to change a light bulb and five to talk about how good the old one was. I'm gonna tell you, you can watch the line. People that laugh, people that laugh moved here. People that don't laugh are thinking, well, I know exactly who those five people are. And I'm gonna go home and tell them you told that joke on.
Well, if we have no more business other than chatting, would someone make a motion?
I'm leaving to adjourn.
I'll send it.
On favor?
Aye.
All right, we're done.
I'll get fixed dinner from the wire.